Good evening. The Workshop Council Meeting for the City of Coppers Cove held November 4th, 2025 is called to order at 5:01 PM. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey?
Here.
Christina Strophas?
Here.
Rita Hogan?
Here.
Sean Alzona?
Here.
John Hale?
Here.
Del Chudway?
Here.
Vanya Hart?
Here.
Jack Smith?
Here.
All right. Everyone's present. We move to Item C announcements.
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
None at this time?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, right?
Just one, sir. November 15th, which is two Saturdays from now, our Solid Waste Department is hosting the citywide cleanup for hazardous materials and we have a shred event occurring on that same day and it'll be at the transfer station.
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
No announcements. Okay. We move on to Item D, Public Recognition.
Item one, Employee Service Awards, November 2025. Ryan Havelaw, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, it's the first of the month and we get to recognize our amazing team members tonight. And tonight, we're going to start with Stephen Evilseizer, who is celebrating five years of service with our Solid Waste Department, and he is currently a commercial driver. Steve began his career with the City of Coppers Cove on November 30, 2020, as a heavy equipment operator at the transfer station within the Solid Waste Department. He later transitioned to his current role as a bulk brush driver, where he continues to serve our citizens with dedication and precision. Highly skilled in brush and bulk collection, Steve measures each pile accurately and ensures customers are charged fairly. He operates a wide range of equipment and keeps his vehicle in excellent condition. A dependable team player, Steve communicates well and works efficiently to ensure every route is completed. His professionalism, integrity, and positive attitude make him a valued member of both his department and the community. His supervisor noted, "Steve has a sense of duty that stands out more than others. He's committed to his routes and demonstrates his high moral character, not only in the workplace, but as a vital part of the community." Steve, thank you for your dedicated service to our city and community. Next, we celebrate with John Phil Jr., who is our Backflow Prevention Technician, also celebrating five years of service. John began his career with the City of Coppers Cove on November 30, 2020, as a laborer in the Parks and Recreation Department. He transitioned to Backflow Preventative Technician in the Water Distribution Department in August of 2023, where he continues to serve our citizens with diligence and expertise. John's knowledge of his role is impressive, especially given his time in the position. He efficiently manages the backflow program, advancing regulatory compliance through careful monitoring, consistently makes sound judgments, and handles most situations independently, maintaining the backflow database and meticulously ensuring it's accurate. His supervisor noted that John's strengths in dependability and knowledge stand out. He can be counted on to complete tasks promptly and has a deep understanding of his position, taking initiative to expand his knowledge when needed. John has also jumped in on numerous other activities throughout the city. So, John, thank you for your dedication over the last five years of service. Next, we celebrate with Antonio O'Neil, also celebrating five years of service within our Solid Waste Department. Antonio was hired by the City of Coppers Cove on November 9, 2020, as a residential driver in the Solid Waste Department, where he continues to serve our citizens with skill and dedication. Antonio is a highly capable and efficient route manager. He has mastered all eight collection areas and regularly shares his knowledge with peers. Known for his superb route performance, he consistently collects more cans than any other driver in a typical week. Antonio approaches challenges pragmatically, using sound judgment to solve issues independently, while always prioritizing the customer. His supervisor noted, "Antonio possesses many strengths that positively impact the department, but his influence stands out most. His peers seek his guidance and approval, reflecting the respect he's earned through his knowledge and his leadership." Antonio, thank you for the five years of dedicated service to our city and community. And we celebrate next with Howard Dixon, celebrating 15 years of service within our Animal Control Department. Howard began his career with the City of Coppers Cove on November 8, 2010, as an Animal Control Officer I and was promoted to Animal Control Officer II in October 2013, and continues to serve our community with dedication and care. Howard approaches his duties with professionalism and compassion, ensuring the safety of both the public and animals. He reliably supports his fellow officers, communicates effectively, and handles calls for service with confidence. Howard is thorough in his work, maintaining accurate and timely records, while always seeking ways to return animals to their owners before bringing them to the shelter. His supervisor noted, "Howard is reliable, self-starting, and respected by his peers." He continues to advocate for the microchipping ordinance and expanding the animal-at-large ordinance to include cats. And the microchipping ordinance was one of those recommendations that Howard brought to the city, and we have continued to move that forward. Howard, thank you for the amazing 15 years of service to our city and community. Mayor and Council, that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you to each of our employees. You make this city great, and I appreciate that. We move to Item Two.
Presentation by the Area Veterans Advisory Committee, recognition as a Department of Veteran Affairs Veterans Day Regional Site, Kevin Kelller, Public Relations Director.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. This evening, we're going to have Ms. Lori Spencer, who's the Central Texas Veterans Day Regional Site Coordinator, come forward to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, and, excuse me, and Community Members. So, I am really honored to be able to do this again. I am Lori Spencer, as Kevin said. I am the local Central Texas Area Veterans Day Regional Site Coordinator. It is my honor to be able to present this certificate recognizing Coppers Cove, oops, Coppers Cove, as a regional site for the Department of Veterans Affairs for Veterans Day. This is really significant, and I say this pretty much every year, but there are 56 communities across 28 states. And in the state of Texas, there's only two communities, Central Texas, which includes Coppers Cove, Colleen, and Hargites, and then the other community is in Fort Worth. So, it's a really big recognition. We want to say thank you so much to Coppers Cove for your dedication and service to veterans. And so, I would like to present this certificate to the Mayor or Kevin, who's going to receive it.
I think we're all going to come down.
Yeah, they did. All right.
She's been on vacation.
No, we're not on vacation.
Not on vacation. It wasn't a vacation.
All right, we have one workshop item.
Item one, accessory structures presentation, Bobby Lewis, Development Services Director.
Chapter 20 zoning, we're going to talk into, dive into Section 20-1-10, Measurements and Allowances. And so, we'll just jump right into it. What this is, is a diagram, Figure 20-3-5-1, for accessory buildings in residential districts. And you'll see the green area, the box, that's the rear yard area. And say, for a typical single-family home, if you have a 60-foot wide by 40-foot deep backyard, that's 2,400 square feet. Well, 25% of that can be dedicated to an accessory structure, meaning that structure could be 600 square feet. And so, if you look at the orange area, that's the buildable area, and this box represents the 25% of the rear yard area, and that can be placed anywhere you see in this orange box. There's a standard three-foot side yard setback here on this side. There's also a six-foot building separation that's required between the accessory structure and the main structure. Also, this illustrates utility easements, where the accessory structure cannot be put within a utility easement. That's what these little dash lines, light dash lines are for. Also, we allow expansion into the front yard setback. The new zoning ordinance that was passed in 2023 allows for structures to be put in the front yard. Before, they weren't allowed at all. So, for example, if you have a porch, or say, a carport, you can actually go into the required 25-foot setback. And in some newer homes, there's only a 20-foot setback. So, that's why you have the difference between 15- to 10-foot setback line, that a porch, or say, a carport can go into the front yard setback. So, now, we have front yard designs that comply with the setbacks in Chapter 20 zoning. We have 2302 Veterans Avenue. You can see this particular design. They've added kind of a carport here, but it's well within the 25-foot setback that normally is required. On 610 Shady Lane, I actually helped this person, using the new ordinance, to build a carport, and he actually is out within 15 feet of the front property line. And in 501 Allen Street, this is an L-shaped design, but they filled in the L with the carport, and it looks like there had maybe a garage enclosure in the back. Here are some more examples. At 932 Taylor Creek Road, we see this structure here. It's a gabled structure. It's built out of metal, where the actual house is just a stick-frame house. So, you can see, it really matches in color, but doesn't match in material. At 3115 King's Trail, we have the same scenario, a flat-roofed design that goes into the front yard setback. But their house happens to be set back further than normal, say, 50 feet. They went beyond the 25-foot requirement. And then, at 910 Ridge Line, we have another gabled structure, metal structure. Again, there's no requirement that it has to match the existing residence. And then, we have side street designs that are in compliance with Chapter 20 zoning. Here, we have 1607 Freedom Lane. You can see here, because it's a corner lot, they can actually come within three feet of this side yard setback if there's no easement there. So, they're allowed to attach a carport at this location. At 3,001 White Mesa Circle, we have the same situation. It's a corner lot, but they're set back well beyond what is required. The same, or 602 West Lincoln Avenue, we have this metal structure, and it's actually within the three-foot setback requirement. We have some more corner lot designs that look fairly close, but they actually are in compliance, because at 2102 Bolden, we have, it's only, it's set back three feet from the side, but because it's on a side of the property, it's allowed to encroach and come within three feet, because there's no easements there. Same situation at 1502 Robinson Avenue. There's a corner lot as well, and we can see it's, the side structure is within the three-foot setback. And again, the same here at 1110 South 25th Street. Now, we get into the carports that do not comply with the setback requirements. At 3007, or 1307 Robinson Avenue, we can see this structure here is, doesn't, hasn't separated by six feet, right? It's not attached. It's kind of a temporary structure, and it's held down with ropes with being tied to the wheels of the vehicle. So, this is something that actually our code enforcement officers would not allow to be placed in there. It's not a safe structure nor an allowable structure. The same at 319 Ash, we see a pole here, right on the property line, on the side and front yard property line, on each side, and then it's strung here, kind of a, I guess, a shade structure. And then, in the back, there's actually a metal structure that goes right to the property line here, that isn't allowed or is in violation of zoning code. And then, 2703 Live Oak, we have a situation where this structure is not, these are non-permitted structures. I just want to throw that out there. They did not get a permit. And so, we can see this structure here, it looks like it's getting ready to collapse. It's an illegal structure at that location. So, we have some other examples that are built better, but they're still in violation of the setback requirements. 610 North 17th Street, we have this flat-roofed structure here, extends out, but it's still too close to the front setback. This setback needs to be at least 15 feet, and it looks like they have maybe 10 to 8 feet. At 304 Ash Street, they went nearly all the way to the property line. It's attached, you can see here. Looks structurally sound, but maybe the beams here are a little bit light, but they have poles spaced that would allow, I think, that structure to go in there. But still, I don't, there's been no permits issued on this particular property. And on this particular case, the 2712 Live Oak, the structure looks sound, looks like it was built correctly, but in the wrong location, and it's closer than 15 feet from the front property line. So, this brought us to Mr. Huddleston. Mr. Huddleston spoke to us a couple of meetings ago about his desire to put in a 17-by-22-foot carport in his front yard at 2118 Uvanki. These are the plans that Mr. Huddleston submitted to us for review. He wants to put in a metal structure, kind of a gabled metal structure on his property, and this is the actual location that he wants to put it at. So, in looking at his property and talking to Mr. Huddleston, we feel that staff could support a variance request if he made application to the Board of Adjustment. The reason being is there's no space on his side property line, on the north side, and the slope of 10% on the south side is too great to allow a carport to go in. So, staff would support, if he would make an application, would support him going in and obtaining a variance to the BOA. And that's the idea behind the Board of Adjustment, is to have that mechanism when you're not able to use your property in a similar fashion to that of your neighbor. So, this is what it would look like in elevation view of the carport. He wants it to be three feet from the front property line. And this is kind of an aerial view of what it would look like at that location. And the reason for, he wants to be able to cover his vehicle for the event of a hailstorm that would come in and damage it. So, getting back to this diagram here, remember that this is how we calculate the rear yard area. This is the buildable area in the orange. You have to account for utility easements, the setbacks of three feet on the side, and six-foot separation between buildings, all right? And then, we're allowed to encroach in the front yard. So, we have a little test for you guys.
So, Bobby, before we get to the test, can we go back two slides?
Okay.
Mayor and Council, you had received a public comment from Mr. Huddleston about the carport, and as you can see in this slide and the previous slide, that staff has communicated with Mr. Huddleston that he has a defensible case to request a variance to the Board of That is, requires an application. And Bobby, what is the application fee for something like that?
It's, it could be around $500 with all the notification requirements.
$500 with all the notification requirements? And with the notification requirements, those are state-required notifications, which, you know, wouldn't be that much if we didn't have to do all those, but we do, and rightfully so, to the surrounding residents. And staff would support his request based on the information that you presented.
Based on the physical hardship that are present on his property and the fact that he can't use his property in a similar fashion to that of his neighbor.
Okay.
Yeah. He's at a disadvantage.
Okay. So, before I move on from that, do y'all have any questions about what Bobby just said? Okay. So, the concern that I think Mr. Huddleston has is that he would need to complete an application request, submit it, pay an application fee, but staff makes a recommendation. He's asking for an action, but we can't guarantee that the Board of Adjustments, members that you as council appoint to that board, would approve that. There's a compelling case, there's staff recommendation, but the board members make the final decision in the end. And so, I think that is his concern, correct, Bobby?
Yes.
That he would have to pay a fee and doesn't have 100% guarantee that it would pass or be granted.
It's a special reaction by the Board of Adjustment.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, Mayor and Council, that's kind of the situation that Mr. Huddleston is in. Bobby has demonstrated the current physical constraints of his property and what he can do, and the areas where staff would be supportive of it. And I think staff very specifically came up with all these options to help Mr. Huddleston prepare and make a defensible case to receive a variance in front of the Board of Adjustments. And so, that's kind of where that entire situation rests with Mr. Huddleston up to this point. So, just wanted to make that very clear for council to understand. Okay, Bobby, you can go to your test now.
Okay. All right. Which properties are in compliance and which are not? A, B, or C? There's one that's out of compliance. So, is it A, B, or C?
B is out of compliance.
B.
B? Okay. Actually, B is in compliance because it's attached to the building, okay? A is out of compliance because it has to be at least six feet apart, right here. It's too close. And so, A is the one that's out of compliance. B is in compliance because it's actually attached. And of course, C is in compliance.
Yes.
All right. All right. Which are in compliance and which are out of compliance? A, B, or C?
C.
C is out of compliance.
A and C.
You think A?
A and C.
Okay. So, A is in compliance. It was a recent carport that we processed that's actually six feet apart here. C is out of compliance, and we have Robert Henning. He actually has a code compliance case on this particular piece of property because it's not attached, and he actually erected this without a permit. And so, I use his photo for this example, so. All right. So, which of these are in compliance and which are not? There's only one that's out of compliance. A, B, or C?
B.
I have an A and I have a B. Okay. So, A is in compliance because this particular property is set back so far from the road, they erected this building within the 15-foot setback requirement, okay? So, actually, this, and it's separated by more than six feet. So, A is in compliance. It's B that's out of compliance because it's not attached. It has to be attached to the building or be separated by six feet. Now, if they pushed that building back six feet, it would be in compliance, like we saw in the other slide.
Okay, help me out.
Okay.
Let's go back. A is in compliance. I mean, that looks like it goes all the way out to the street.
Yes. And so, looks can be deceiving, because the actual main structure is set back some 50 feet, and they decided to put a building in front of that, but you only need to be 15 feet from the front property line. And it's separated by six feet from that building behind it.
The front property line.
Yeah. The front property line is going to be right around this, where the shade starts here between, you got two spots of shade, right around this point, right here. It's out of cul-de-sac, too. And so, they have extra space, right, on their property.
That was a trick question.
Yes.
There you go. That was trying to trick you guys.
Trickery and the photography.
It certainly looks like it's out of compliance.
Yeah.
I'll put it that way.
All right. Okay, well, that's it.
So, Mayor and Council, Ms. Hogan, you specifically requested this item to talk about what we could do. Bobby has really gone through what our code says, what it allows, what changes were implemented with our latest code adoption, which took how many years to?
About 18 months.
Oh, it was.
For the zoning point. We did do the comp plan.
Can you say that again?
Vanya was right.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. But, Council, this was a request that you had asked to have brought for you, and we're looking for direction, if there's any direction, with our existing code.
So, Mr. Huddleston is asking to be guaranteed approval from the Board of Adjustments, which is tantamount to saying, why do we have the Board of Adjustments?
Right. He also would like the ordinance changed so that anybody in the future would be able to do that without having to go to the Board of Adjustments. That's his main drive. And that's why I brought it up here, because I don't understand how some of that works, and I wanted to know why it was the way that it was, so that I can try to explain it to him. Because he doesn't want to have to make an application and take that risk. He says, just change the ordinance and, so that we can make it work.
I guess my question is, is there anybody that thinks we need to change?
I think it works, our ordinance works for most situations, and I guess, would you agree with that, Bobby? I think it works for a lot of situations, and that's why they have the Board of Variance to get, you know, a variance from the zoning ordinance, and it's for special circumstances, just as he has, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Hogan?
Yes, I'd like to just add on to what Jack is saying. We had community partners about, like, about 18 months ago who came together to do
So, leave the ordinance as is.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you for putting that together. All right, there are no other items, so at 5:33, we stand adjourned. The regular meeting will begin at 6 o'clock.